On page two is the auditor's opinion on the financial statements. Basically says that the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with the accounting standards and that we did -- and the government accounting standards. And it also points to various supplemental information in the report that is also fairly stated. Page five is the first of three different types of financial information that's in the report. This is what we call the government-wide financial statement. It's the county activities all combined into a couple of columns and shows all the long-term assets and liabilities of the county. Page seven is the government-wide income statement, if you will. Shows, in this case, the expenses and then the revenues or the revenue sources that support those activities for the county. And then page eight is the fund financial statements. This is where we -- the statements show each activity of the county, the assets, liabilities, and the income and expense activities by type of activity and by grant, if you will. It shows all what we call the major funds. The larger funds are recorded separately or shown separately, and then all others are in another governmental column. And the detail of those other governmental columns is in the back of the report, and I'll show you where that is when we go through the report. Page nine and 11 are both reconciliations to get you from the fund financial statements to the government-wide financial statements. And basically, it's just the recording of long-term assets and liabilities like long-term debt and fixed assets, capital assets. Page 10 is the income statement of the governmental funds presentation. So it shows you the revenues and then the expenditures or the function that the revenues were expended on. Page 12 is the budget to actual schedule for the general fund. And it shows, basically, in county governments, the fund level is the legal level of budget authority. So it shows that the county stayed within their legal level of budget authority during Page 14 is the budget to actual schedule for the major revenue, special revenue fund. This fund actually did not stay within its legal level of budget authority, and you can see that notated on the total expenditure line with a negative $5,966. Page 16 is the proprietary funds for the detention center and ICE facility. And then the internal service fund, which is basically just playing out now. There's no more -- it was for internal service for self-insurance. Page 17 is the proprietary fund income statements. Page 18 is a statement of cash flow, shows how those proprietary statements received and used cash. And this is, of course, this statement's only required for certain types of statements or proprietary statements. Page 19 is the fiduciary funds. These are the funds that the county acts as a fiduciary for other entities. Generally speaking, it's the property tax collections and distributions to other entities. Page 20 is the beginning of the notes to the financial statements. Give you additional information about the financials, how we compile the information, what kind of accounting standards are used for different statements and those kinds of things, and what policies led to the accounting of certain items. And that goes on through page 52. Then we have what we call required supplementary information. This is required by the governmental accounting standards for the pension plan for para, and it shows the para status for the last six years total currently. The schedule will be compiled for a 10-year period and enrolled every 10 years. Shows the county's proportion of the liability of para, its proportionate share of the total And it shows for each division of para also. So it shows the general, municipal, general, and then the police. Then begins supplementary information. This is where the individual funds that I said, you know, there was a combined other governmental funds. This is all those individual funds presented separately to get to that total up in the front. And it talks and it tells you what each fund's purpose is. And then it gives you the balance sheet and income statement for each of those funds. Then we have other supplementary information, which begins on page 76. These are schedules that are required by the state auditor's office. They just provide additional information. For instance, agency funds shows you the increases and decreases in each of the lines for the activity during the year. There's a schedule on 77 for legislative grants and what the status of those grants are as of year end. 79 is the schedule of collateral pledge required by -- for public funds. So the banks have pledged these, this collateral against the deposits. Page 81 is a list of all deposit and investment accounts by bank. And that goes through page 83. Page 84 is the tax rule reconciliation reconciles taxes from last year's receivable to the current year-end receivable, including the assessments and then the collections in summary. Page 85 is basically the same thing, a little more detail, and it's by entity. So it shows what was assessed and collected for each entity during the year and for the last 10 years summarily. And then page 89 is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. This year, the county did expend more than $750,000, which requires that the audit be what we call a single audit. And that requires that we do test work to determine whether major grants are in compliance with the grant requirements. Okay. Page 92. This is the internal control report. Basically provides information on whether the county has controls implemented, whether they are adequate as designed, and whether they are being complied with. And we do test work in all of -- in the audit. We select samples of all different types of transactions and review them through the control system to see that the controls existed and were being applied. And so page 93, in that first paragraph, it talks about significant deficiencies that were identified during the audit. And there were four, and I'll get to those in a minute. And then the next paragraph, compliance and other matters. This is compliance issues that were found during that test work as well. And there were two of those. Page 94 is the auditor's report on the compliance with each major program, which comes from the single audit. In the county's situation, their program that was tested was the schools and roads grants to states program. And so that's what it's -- if we found any compliance violations within those programs, and we did not. Page 96 is just a summary of the audit at a glance. So we basically had an unmodified opinion, which is a good thing. It's basically saying the account, the accounting is in accordance with the standards and that the financial statements are fairly represented, represent the county's activities. Tells you that there was no material weaknesses. There were significant deficiencies, which we'll go over in a minute. And there was no material noncompliance to the financial statements. And then as regard to the federal awards, there were no material weaknesses, no significant efficiencies. There was an unmodified opinion on the major programs. And there were no compliance requirements under the 516A. And the county did qualify as a low-risk entity. And that's a test that are -- numerical test to see based on a lot of different criteria. You look at the size of the program and then determine whether, if the county had had violations in prior years that were significant, then they may not qualify as a low-risk entity. A low-risk entity is good because then we don't have to test as much. So it's saying that we have confidence, so therefore, we don't have to do as much. So it allows us to have a smaller scope. Page 97 begins with the actual findings during the year. So this first section, current year findings. We had a finding for travel and per diem requirements. Every year we test this. We take a sample of travel and per diem transactions. Generally speaking, it's a random sample. And if our random dispersment sample doesn't come up with enough items, then we'll select specific items. And so we found some incidences where one individual was reimbursed in excess of the allowed amount for reimbursables for incidentals. It's allowed to -- it's only allowed for $30 or $6 a day. And that individual's reimbursed 82 instead of the 30. Mileage exceeded the common carrier limit. I think we all know what that was about. We've been talking about it for a while, for 1712.
Took Mike Lee down.
Should have been limited to the coach fare. Supporting documentation was the other issue that we, when we're looking at not, not all the supporting documentation is attached to the travel reimbursements to make a good assessment of whether it's within the policy or state statute. We recommend that the county apply policy and statute and maybe get clear documentation so that the reviewer can really tell when they're reviewing that documentation or for approval that it meets the requirements. And then the county's response. Of course, the county had passed or set a new policy after the fact, after this test work period for travel and per diem. That clarifies a lot of things. Page 98, peak card dispersments. Seems silly. We had one out of 15, although it wasn't a large sample. We did have one, and we just want to point out it's a compliance issue or, you know, not following policy, not getting the documentation that's needed. So we had one issue, although very reasonable to get corrected. 2020-003, accounting maintenance of long-term assets and liabilities. This is a situation where county government operates on a cash basis, essentially. Budgeting is on a cash basis. But for accounting purposes and for all financial data, you still have to do your accruals and bring in other long-term assets and liabilities for the accounting for the government-wide. So it requires additional effort on the account, on the finance staff, to pay attention to those things that you don't normally have to deal with, but you need to keep them reconciled. It's like all of that, the county has a lot of transactions with NMFA, for example. Lots of debts within NMFA for different good, valid reasons. Those are not recorded on the county's books. You don't see them in your budget taxials in the sense that you see the debt. So in order to record them at year end or at any point in time, we have to have reconciliations. Some of those debts and transactions related to debt and assets were not reconciled at year end. So it took a lot of digging and reconciling to get to the number. So we're saying that there needs to be a better reconciliation process. 2020-004, expenditures in excess of budgetary authority. We had three funds that were actually seated at the budget. I pointed one out that where we showed the budget actual schedule. We didn't, weren't required to have the budget actual schedules for all funds, only for major funds. And so the other two that are shown weren't shown in this report, but they do get reviewed by the auditors to see if they were in compliance, and they were not. So of course, our recommendation is to get a set procedure in place that that gets reviewed every month, make sure that something doesn't fly under the radar. Then finding 2020-005, use of county property in position for unauthorized purposes. Basically, as far as the audit's concerned, our general overall review or purpose of the audit is to make sure that public funds are being expended in accordance with policy and laws. So part of that means that everyone utilizing funds and assets utilize those assets for county business. That's what the public expects. And so then we had this issue that was discussed earlier about using county property, our public assets for non-county business. The expectation by the public is that those are for county business and approved county 2020-006, lack of policy for contract oversight. During the audit, we received input from various different sources, one being the state auditor's office. In this case, it happened to be the AG's office, to look into things that they are getting information about. And one of them was to look to see what procedures the county has in place with regard to looking at contracts and the compliance requirements in the contracts. So many of these contracts, whether they're for services or whatever they're for, almost all have some sort of compliance requirement in them. And so county, the county needs to have some procedure and process in place to monitor the compliance of those contracts, not only the financial piece of it, but any other requirements of that contract. And so when we were looking at this particular situation, we didn't identify that there was anybody that was actually doing that in the, with regard to the ICE and detention center contracts, other than the financial piece of it. So that, this comment applies to those contracts, but it applies to all contracts, basically. There should be somebody that's tasked with or a group, or I don't know how it would be divided up, but there should be a policy that are, and somebody being accountable for those compliance requirements in each contract.
When you're talking contracts, like through procurement contracts or contracts that, for example, the Timala Fire Station that they're going to give, what, I'm just trying to figure exactly what that.
Right. No, I understand. Most of these contracts are procured because they have a financial under, they're, they have financial consequences. So that's the beginning. So yes, any contract. So not all contracts will have any, very many compliance requirements. Someone will just, you do this service and I'll pay you this much money, and that's pretty much the end of it. But you would still are, the county's still required, if they're, if someone's providing the county a service, is the service in accordance with requirements? Is it what we asked them to do? So we pay you, but are you doing what we asked you to do? So in this case, it's the contracts with the detention and ICE facility contractor that provides the service to run the facilities. Those contracts have a lot of information in them, and there's a lot of requirements as to how they're supposed to conduct that service. And so the county needs to be, to be monitoring that, to see that they're complying with Page 102. We didn't have any federal award findings this year. So that says none. Page 103, we did have a federal award finding with regard to the Title III expenditures in the prior year, and that was resolved. It was a lack of reporting the obligated funds and expenditures. And page 104 is the county's corrective action plan. And this, this actual, the corrective action plan is part of what we, every year after the audit's complete, we have to file or put this whole report basically online with the federal clearinghouse. So it's out there for any grantor to look at and see what the county did or did not do, and read their findings and the financial condition of the county as well. So the whole audit report is there, and we have to, we upload all of this information in there and ask, answer questions for that. So that's out there for every year. And any, anybody can go on and read it. Any government entity that has federal funding and expenditures in excess of $750,000 has a report out there for each fiscal year that that occurs. And that is it. I hope it did. Questions, if anyone has them?
The, on the contract part of it, trade as part of that, I mean, the reviewing, the you're doing.
He doesn't, he doesn't monitor our agreement between us and the architects. He reviews the actual drafted documents, plans. This is the position I asked for in budget. I had asked for a contract monitor slash grant writer. They would be taking on all of these duties. Yeah, it's pretty broad-reaching, so that person has, has to have a pretty good knowledge of a lot of things and feel confident in looking at the, a lot of different issues. I mean, not many people are very versed in how things go at a detention center, so there's a lot of non-financial compliance issues.
Well, on page 106, 2020-005, where it says condition, "A commissioner appears to have used county property for unauthorized county business." Now, is that, is that a finding? Is that, was that a determined, that was determined that that was, I guess that has to be talking about me.
It is.
Okay. And so with unauthorized non-county business, so how did that determination come about? Was that this?
That's why it says appears, because it wasn't observed by us. But it was, information was provided to us from a couple of different sources, and so we were required to look and see. Basically, the issue is not so much that it happened or if it happened. In our cases, what do we, what controls do we have in place to keep it from, something from happening that shouldn't?
The law?
And that's the way.
The letter of the law?
Right. But you have to have a way to monitor that. The law is one thing, and the law is there, and we hope we all provide, abide by the law. But from, from a county's perspective, they need to have some kind of procedure in place to monitor any kind of compliance, whether it's financial or otherwise. And that's the same thing with the contract compliance. So there has to be some sort of procedure or control in place to make sure that.
So, so I'm just, I mean, I, I want to abide by the law, and I want to abide by policy, and I want to do things right. And so I guess my question would be, I mean, because I guess it has to be for making a video in my office. I would assume that that's what. So is that, can I do that or can I not do that? Or are you the person to ask?
According to what I understand, you cannot do that because that's use of public property for a purpose other than what you're charged with as a commissioner.
Yeah. Okay. So, all right. So you can't, it's, so then nobody can make videos on county property then?
It shouldn't be. Not for other purposes unless it's for county business.
Okay. 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 All right. Well, then I, then I know, because I asked Michael that. I, I don't know. It was whenever I got the information from the state that, because that was a complaint that was filed against me that I was making these videos in my county office. And I went to our county attorney, Michael, and asked him, and he said there was nothing that he could find inside the law that would prevent me from doing that. So apparently there must.
Yeah, it's pretty broad.
There must be then, I guess.
It is broad, but basically, any public asset or financial resource can only be used for county-approved business.
Okay.
So again, it's all about public money. And, you know, counties, the, all the county's resources and assets were purchased with public funds. So therefore, it's only for whatever's approved public business for the county.
Well, I wish I would have known that then, and I wouldn't have done it.
I mean, that's true for, you know, you don't want employees doing that kind of thing either. I mean, yeah, they're on county time, but, you know, that's, you know, there's all kinds of issues with regard to that. It applies to everybody, employees, elected officials, everyone. County resources, you have to have county permission, and county public businesses Any other questions?
I think so. So the person that we voted to hire should take care of a lot of this, the contracts and oversight.
They'll address that efficiency.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is this pretty minor or is this like major?
Well, it's, that's why they have those different levels of findings. Remember, I said we didn't have any material weaknesses? So, but they can become material weaknesses, and that means that something is pervasive enough that it could affect the financial condition of the county or the compliance with some major law. So know there was no material weaknesses, but there are what we call significant deficiencies. So, I mean, they're to be taken seriously, yes. And every year, what we do is we review each of these findings to see what the status of them, have we done something about it? That's part of the audit that we perform each year. So we look at the prior findings, look at, see what the status is, what's been done, and what the county said they were going to do, and whether they did it or not. So grantors get, the place you'll see it most effective, or most where you, the county could see blowback on from a finding is grantors really look at these audit reports to see how you're managing your business. And they want to be, have some assurance that the county's doing all they can to protect those funds and to follow the law and the grant requirements and whatever. So they will look to this to see what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. This time, I'll make a motion to request approval of resolution 09. Make a request approval of resolution number 04-08-21-109-49. Presentation approval of the 2020 audit. Can I get a second?
No, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. At this time, I was requested to, for a lunch break.
What are my feelings?
What time is it?
1:00?
1:10? Uh, what time is it?
2:15?
2:15? Okay. We'll resume at 2:15. We'll resume at two fifteen.
All right, we'll continue with the agenda. We'll go to agenda item number sixteen. Request approval of resolution oh four dash oh eight dash two one backslash one oh nine dash five nine. Resolution declaring Otero County to be a hundred percent open for business, uh, open for discussion. Or we can make a motion and vote on it.
Well, I talked to Steve Copeland at Otero County or New Mexico County Association for about half an hour about this yesterday. And his recommendation was that we table it until some changes can be made because he felt like some of the stuff in it was illegal. And he definitely didn't like the part in there about the sheriff's office being asked to be involved in this. So I don't, I don't, don't want to.
Okay, yeah, well, I'm stepping, I, I, I don't, I'm stepping back into my commission meeting right now. I don't, I, I, yeah, so I guess y'all can just go ahead and do this. You know, I feel like I'm being denied my right due process. Um, by you scheduling this hearing on the same day as the commissioning, I don't know what you expect me to do.
I, I talked with Grace Phillips this morning.
Okay.
And I think you're very wrong in what you're doing.
She said that this is totally illegal.
Okay.
All right, Corey, what we did, we opened up on sixteen. We were just discussing it.
All right. Yeah, um, you know, I had Michael draft this. I don't know, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't know what, what we're supposed to do. Um, or I, I guess we can just let the state of New Mexico and the governor do whatever they want to do. Um, to the people of our county, I feel like it's wrong. I felt like we had, um, a good position in our last meeting. I felt like we were all together on it as we, we passed this resolution. Um, right here, that, that where we all agreed that the, that the health orders are unconstitutional. And the board declares that those officials who enforce or abide by these unconstitutional health orders violate their oaths of office and their duty to the people of New Mexico. That was a, that was a, a resolution that we all voted on and passed unanimously. Um, and so I had Michael write this other, uh, declaration to declare that our county is a hundred percent open or our county is open now. Um, because we're not going to enforce the health orders that we already deemed last month were unconstitutional. And we all agreed that any elected official who does enforce these mandates are going to be in violation of their oath of office. So I don't see any other option that we have as county officials other than to open our county up. If we don't, then we're going to be enforcing the coronavirus mandates. So I'd encourage y'all to, to vote on this declaration to open Otero County up. And, you know, I mean, and I, I just, I feel like if we don't, then we would condemn ourselves through the, our own resolve that we voted on last month.
I talked to Grace Phillips this morning, uh, on this. She recommended, do not go this way. It's totally illegal, the mandates, the resolution is totally illegal is what she's saying. Uh, she was also saying it could put the county into a liability. So that's, that's just what, uh, she said.
Yeah, and what, and what, what is the, how much more can they hurt us? They're liable, we're a liability, what, or they could sue us? They could shut our schools down. They could make us wear masks. They could make our kids stay home. You know, what more could the state of New Mexico do to the people of Otero County than what they've already done?
My big deal is not so much what they can do to us is if there is a person, his mom gets sick, she dies. Because she said, the commissioners of Otero County said we could, we don't have to do any of this. And then they're going to turn right around and sue us for mega fees. And they'll win.
Yeah, but I mean, we, we deal with, how, we deal with sickness all the time. What, the flu is more lethal and more contagious. Well, I just, I don't understand it. We, we sit passively by and we allow these mandates to completely destroy our small businesses, destroy our communities, rob our children of their lives. People are suffering from addiction, depression, drug abuse. And we make everybody wear a mask. We shut everything down. We can, we're, all we are is the, the, the enforcers of an, of what we've already called as an unconstitutional governor, an unconstitutional state government. They don't have the legal right and the legal power to do what they're doing today. The governor is not a dictator. She does not have the authority and the power to speak and laws become laws. We have a government and two other branches that have to be engaged in order to make a law a law and an agreement. What they're doing is illegal and we sit back worrying, what, scared that we're gonna, they're gonna sue us?
I'm not.
No.
The people are the ones who's gonna sue you.
Huh?
The people will be the ones that sue you.
Well, you know, I think it's time to quit living in fear of everything, you know? If we open up, if we give our people of Otero County the confidence that we as county commissioners and a county sheriff stand behind them and their right to, 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 for freedom of enterprise and to, to make their, and we're not, we're not opening things up. We're not, it's not us. It's just allowing people the right to make that decision on their own. You know, we're not, we're not opening businesses. We're just allowing businesses the right to make that decision themselves without fear of the county or, or the state coming in and harassing them and shutting them down. We could be, we could be the first. We could make an actual stand and make it publicly and openly that we support the, the, the people's right. And if somebody gets, goes to a business and, or where, if they contracted COVID, how in the world could they say, oh, well, let's sue the county because they're, it's their fault? They, they would not have a legal case. They could not sue us, you know? If an individual business, if they contracted inside of that individual business, then that individual business might, who knows? They might have some liability, but I don't think, I think that'd be a pretty hard case to prove anyways. But again, I just, I don't, I'm not saying let's go in and force everything to open. All I want to do is for us to vote on this, just to give people the right to make that decision themselves, you know? I mean, we, 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 we're living in the brink right now. We might not even have another county fair this year. You know, and, and for us, maybe it's not that big of a deal. But what about whenever you, when we were twelve, thirteen years old? Those county fairs is what we looked forward to all year. But now our children don't have that, you know? Now they're, they're out here playing football and sports and masks. I mean, if the kids want to choose to do that, then they can choose to do that, but it should be their choice. It should be the school's choice. It should be the business's choice. And by us coming together as a commission board, we could just give that power back to the people. Because if we don't, then all that means is that we are supporting and enforcing the rules that the state is passing down. And we already agreed, as I said last month, that we weren't going to do that.
We agreed that they were going, we were, we were not for the closing. We were wanting the state to open. We're trying to get the governor to open the state up. The other, one other item on this, does it pertain to us? I don't know. I hope not. Tomorrow is when the governor signs all of the cap outline. Poke her in the eye right here and she, what if she doesn't sign it?
What if, what if? Then maybe we'll just have to figure it out. Maybe we'll start logging up here. Maybe that'll be enough to give us the courage, which we lack, to go up here and start cutting some trees or to start mining. We have all the natural resources in this county to make our county wealthy and prosperous. All we lack is the courage and the backbone to actually stand up to the government and access them, you know? We, we have a, one of the largest reserves of natural gas in the United States, what I've been told, on the south end of Otero Mason. And we're in a, we're in a time right now where there's an energy shortage. If we could give outside companies the confidence to know that Otero County would support them in their efforts to develop this energy, we would attract energy companies. They would come, but we have to show them that we're willing to stand up and stand strong and stand against what I believe is tyranny. I believe it's tyranny. I believe it's communism. I believe that what the governor is doing right now is a horrible injustice to the people. And why should she, we're supposed to be a republic. We're supposed to have representation on a local level. We're not supposed to just fall under the heavy hand of what I believe is a tyrannical governor. But the, but the resolution last month though, Gerald, it's, it, it says the board declares that those officials who enforce or abide by these unconstitutional health orders violate their oaths of office and their duty to the people of New Mexico. So if we don't open up, then we will be abiding by what we've already deemed as unconstitutional health orders.
Well, businesses already have the right to open. I mean, that's on them. You know, we, we can't give them that right because the fines and the pulling their liquor license and all that, that's going to fall back on the people that own those businesses. So I mean, a resolution to me is.
We can open the county.
Well, I don't know. And when I talked to Steve Copeland.
Would you be in agreement to opening the county?
I want the whole.
Do you believe that that mask right there is going to?
I hope the whole state opens, not just Otero County. And I think if we could get a coalition of state, of counties to open, we'd have a lot better chance. If we just have Otero County, I think what's going to put a target on our back. And I think we're going to probably get moved back to red. And I think we're real close to opening. So I don't know if it's worth it to do this to our businesses right now. And I certainly don't agree with this part about pitting our county sheriff against the state police. I mean, these guys, they, they support each other, they back each other up, and then you want them to, to fight over this stuff? I won't support that.
Do, let me ask you this. Do you think that mask is going to keep you from getting the coronavirus today?
I have no idea. I'm wearing this mask. I am wearing this mask because to, as a county official, that's what we're supposed to do. You choose not to do it.
Yeah.
I choose to kind of try to follow what the orders are to be in here.
Even though you don't think that it helps?
When I'm not in here, I don't wear a mask. But since I'm in a county building, I'm wearing a mask.
So you just comply with something that you might not believe in, but since it's the rules.
I'm trying to do what I'm supposed to do as a county commissioner, Corey.
And maybe you're right, maybe you're right, maybe I'm wrong, and maybe I never, maybe I need to just quit trying to fight at all. You know, maybe we, maybe I'm, maybe I am the bad guy and maybe I am the troublemaker and the one that causes you so much, y'all so much distress that maybe I should just quit trying to fight. Because I want, you think I'm personally, you think I'm gay? This is fun for me. This is the most difficult time of my life, especially when those that I thought were friends turn on you, you know?
Yeah, I do.
It's hard.
It is.
But I'm doing it, trying to bring representation and trying to hold the line, trying to keep people from feeling like they have to wear a mask or they're going to lose their job. It's not fair. That's why, that's why people have elected officials like us to stand in that gap. And we could stand in it today. We could, you know? We could defend a person's individual right if they want to choose to put a mask on or not or close their business or open their business. We could, that's why we are elected. And that's why we swear an oath to the constitution. We don't swear an oath to the state of New Mexico and their laws. We sw, we swear an oath to the constitution that keeps us free. And if we would honor our oaths, we would remain free. But if we're scared and we're cower to the state and live in fear, then we're going to go further and further and deeper and deeper into bondage, where, is where we're at right now.
You know, in this building right here, this is the county manager's building. She is responsible for everything in this building. We have an office there, that's true. She has made a, a rule in there, you're in this building. She has made a, a rule in there, you're in this building to wear a mask.
She didn't make that rule. We passed it and we gave her the authority to enforce them and they said, "I didn't vote for it Gerald, you did."
Yeah, you exactly.
But I didn't vote for the, I didn't vote for it.
We did this rule to get off the $131,000 fine from OSHA because no way was wearing masks in here. I'm not saying nobody, there were people not wearing masks in here. So she, to get this fine dropped, set up these rules, which, right now in this room, there's two of you that are not abiding by her rules, no respect for her.
No, it's not, I have respect for Pamela. I don't have respect for unconstitutional laws that you voted on the last meeting that said that you felt like they were unconstitutional and now you're, you're telling me I'm supposed to have respect for unconstitutional laws that you voted on Gerald and said they were unconstitutional? And you're gonna school me on respect?
It sounds that way.
Forget about it.
Okay, that's fine. All right, I make a motion to...
Can I speak?
No sir.
He can't?
No sir. I have the right to whether we wanna vote or not, you can ask any one of them.
Okay, well, I thought you were all forward allowing public comment Gerald, but...
I am, but I'm not gonna listen to, I'm not gonna listen to him.
Oh, you are, but you're not gonna listen to him. That makes sense.
Excuse me?
You heard me.
No, I did not, or I wasn't asking you, excuse me.
Coward.
Coward. Terrific.
Exactly what it is.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion to request approval of resolution 04-08-21/109/59. Resolution declaring Otero County to be open 100% for business. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Moving on to item 17. Discuss and consider giving opportunity for the commissioners to respond to questions and give comment during the unscheduled citizen communication during the regularly scheduled meetings.
Yeah, I brought, this is a resolution that I put on the agenda, um, you know, and this is, this is a, a, a commission meeting where we should give people the respect of a response. The other, the last commission meeting that we had, whenever there was a lady that came in and addressed and had some questions and I went to try to respond to her and all of a sudden you piped up Gerald and said that I didn't have that ability or I couldn't respond? I, that was all new to me. I didn't know that you had made a rule where commissioners couldn't respond in that, now let me finish in the three-minute public comment. And so I would like for us to understand and agree that we should be able to have a response with people during the meeting. We shouldn't be silenced, we shouldn't be censored. This is a commissioners meeting. Now, if the conversation goes south or if it gets out of line, out of hand, that's your job Gerald, as the, as the chair, to call order. And if you need the gavel, it's right sitting right over here. That's why you have a gavel, so you can get order. But to just say, "No, nobody can talk" is wrong. You, you need to step into that position and just take control of the meeting. And if, if there's, if I get into it with somebody or if somebody gets into it with me, then you should interject and call for order. That's the way you run the meeting.
If those guys, my understanding of this is, they come in, they can say what they please, there's nothing that can be decided, you cannot vote on anything, this is for them to release, say whatever they want to say.
It's discussion.
If they have questions and one question's answered, they need to get put on the regular agenda item to where they can come in and everything will be discussed.
Oh, that's not the way it's ever been. It was never like that before. It's always been, whenever you have unscheduled citizen communications, communication, that means there's communication between the commissioner and that person that's coming in. We've always handled our meetings like that. We've always had back and forth communication with people, until just the last couple of meetings when you decided, "No, we can't do it like that anymore." We should be able to have a response and give those people the respect of response whenever they come in and they have something that they wanna present or something that they wanna interject. It doesn't say unscheduled citizen statements, it says unscheduled citizen communication. And so we should keep having our meetings. I don't see what gives you the right to change the rules, to be honest with you, you know? Because we've always had, I mean, unless I'm, unless I'm missing something and we, and it's always been like this, but whenever I chaired the commission board, we always had communication back and forth with those people that would come into a meeting.
You still can't answer anything? And that's just, this is just, that's my own one opinion. You got two more of you right here, whatever. So if she wants to have communications, vote on it. It's done deal. What does she want? That's just my opinion.
We don't...
If they have, if they have something they need to talk about and they need answers on, they need legal advice on it or whatever, they need to get unscheduled agenda.
Well, that's fine, they can do that too. But that doesn't mean that we can't give somebody the common courtesy and respect of responding to them inside, on the unscheduled communications. We've always done that before, that's the point. I mean, that's the bottom line. We've always had that kind of freedom in a commission meeting to respond to somebody if they come in on an unscheduled deal. But just recently, all of a sudden, you felt like that you could just silence us. Whenever I went to speak to the lady the other day, you scolded me and said, "Oh no, you can't talk." Really? When did that start? When did that start?
Could there be a time limit on the communications?
Yes, three minutes.
Well, there's three minutes for them to talk, for them to talk or whatever they want to do, we got three minutes.
Well, I don't mind responding to them, but I think we need to kinda stick to come, some kinda time limit thing.
Sure, that's where Gerald, that's the chairman, that's, the chairman is the, has the job of keeping the order in the meetings. And if something gets out of order, then you call it to order. And that's where you, that, I mean, everything flows as long as that's happening. And, and we respect you and we respect that.
You can vote on it.
It doesn't have to, I don't know if we have to vote on it, I think we can just have a mutual understanding that we can respond. I mean, we didn't vote on it whenever we, whenever we couldn't respond anymore, at least not that I remember. So, I mean, if you're, or Vicky's good with it. I don't know, I mean, I can put in a motion vote, I mean... I'll ma, I'll, I'll make a motion to give opportunity for commissioners to respond to questions and give comment during the unscheduled citizens' communication during the regularly scheduled meetings. Do I have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Nay.
Motion passes.
All right. Item 19.
That...
Did we skip an 18?
Yeah, with, yeah, well, you pulled it, but that's fine, we already discussed it.
Item 19, request approval of a letter to the office of Attorney General and the State Auditor about the investigation of Commissioner Griffin's travel voucher.
Yeah, I had Michael write these letters, um, and it's just for them to hurry up and get finished with their investigations. It's been going on now about 18 months since Hector Baldarris and Brian Cologne have been investigating the travel vouchers and investigating everything. There's not that much investigating to do and I welcome this investigation as I, we welcomed it from the beginning. Conclude, let's see their conclusion to their investigation because I'm sick of them putting it in the newspaper all the time. I'm sick of constantly being investigated, just like in the same manner that Donald Trump was constantly being investigated in the Mueller investigation, the Mueller investigation. But then whenever the Mueller investigation was concluded, all it did was prove his innocence. And not to say that I'm in any way on that level, but it's kinda relevant all the same. I'm ready for these investigations to be done with. And if they need to come in and speak to the county officials or whoever, then they need to come in and speak to us.
And, and I don't know why you needed approval from us to not have a letter go, sign your name to, to, to the...
Well, because I want it to be done through the county. The county needs to request that these investigations are done.
I can understand that part of it.
I mean, I would do it for you, I can promise you that much. If they were doing this sort of stuff to you Gerald, and they constantly had you under investigation and you were sitting in the seat I am, I would, I would say, "Yeah, absolutely." I mean, I don't know why you wouldn't support getting these investigations wrapped up. I'm, I'm tired of it. You know, now I'm in this recall thing that they've got going and so now they can just use all this scary word of investigations against me just to further try to damage me and slander me politically and it's all politics.
No, I'm, I don't mind signing it, I'm ready for it to be over too.
Yeah. Make a motion for a request approval of letter to the office of Attorney General and the State Auditor about the investigation, Commissioner Griffin's travel voucher.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Moving on to number 20. Request approval to hire outside legal counsel to represent Commissioner Coy Griffin on county-related issues that would otherwise be done by the county attorney.
Pamela, you wanna lead us off?
Uh, Mr. Eshelman informed the board that he could no longer represent Commissioner Griffin, there's a conflict of interest and the commissioner asked me to put this on the agenda. I cannot explain the conflict of interest. Mr. Eshelman will have to step in for that.
Sure. The, the rules of professional responsibility say that an attorney is not to represent somebody when their interests are adverse to their own and I think the discussion before the lunch break showed some of the issues I'm talking about and, um, the threats to subpoena and sue, the threats to my job and so forth.
Yeah, um, you know, I was really blindsided, to be completely honest with you. As Michael, uh, he put together this complaint against me and, uh, I was blindsided because I had no idea that Michael felt the way he did. I felt like I've always gone above and beyond to try to reach out to Michael. Every time I pass by his office, I say hello to him. It's kinda funny, Gunner, every time Gunner goes by, he peeks his head in and says hi to Michael too, just because that's part of our routine when we're going to the office. I thought, when, when Michael recently lost his dad, um, I felt like I tried to be overly considerate and daily checked in to see how his mother was doing and how he was doing and how everybody was handling it. I, I feel like I've, I've, I've always tried to go above and beyond to be Michael's friend and never did I ever have any kind of feelings of harassment against Michael. Now, I question his competency and I have pretty much since the day that I've taken office. And, and I questioned him on how he's handled things. First off, in regards to the, to this travel voucher, you know? When Michael didn't wanna write the statement, I told him that I didn't agree with it, you know? That the county needs to own our mistakes in this, we need to, we need to be transparent. Michael didn't agree that the statement needed to go out and so, um, I, I, I had a disagreement with him at that time and I was, I expressed that with him, but it wasn't ever out of trying to be mean or trying to harass or, or, or such. And, and all the way up to today where, um, you know, this statement against me was made by Gerald and Vicky and it's, it's a completely illegal statement and it was done under Michael's direction. Michael should have had better consciousness of the law and better awareness of the Open Meetings Act as well as our travel policy. But, you know, in regards to the statement, it, it's going back all the way to 2019 where Mike, where Michael's talking about having panic attacks and, and, and his heart is racing and, and he's sobbing and he's crying at different times in this, in this statement. And it's really, I feel like it's very unfair because I never knew any of this stuff was going on. These statements were written to Gerald and to Lori. And y'all, you know, Gerald, you could've given me the courtesy of talking to, talking, you and Lori could've given me the courtesy, if it was an executive session or when it was, to allow me the respect to say, "Hey, Michael's, Michael's been sobbing," or "Michael's got panic attacks," or "Michael's uncomfortable." But, but you know, um, Mi, Michael didn't want, Michael didn't even want that to be even told to me in the, in this one statement dated November 20th, 2019. He says right here, "I am not asking you to take any action on this memo at this time, but only to file it in your office." I say that because an elected official, there is nothing that your office can do to discipline Commissioner Griffin. So instead of allowing me the respect and knowing that I had upset him in this, he would rather just build this case against me and file this in your office. And Michael should've been the one that was defending me, that was representing me. And instead, he was building a case against me, um, through, through this. And, I mean, in, in regards to competency and competency of the law, I mean, with the Open Meetings Act, what their most latest Open Meetings Act violation, but even right here in his own statement, he compromises the county. Whenever he says, "During the executive session of the December 12th meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, he stated I should be fired immediately and would be as Commissioner B's term ended." Which you probably remember that, possibly, in an executive session. I said something along those lines to Michael, but Michael should know that in executive session, you don't speak about those things outside of an executive session. And he puts it in a written statement right here. You know, that's why I had mentioned that to Michael in an executive session because I didn't want it to be said outside. I didn't want it to be known publicly that I was displeased like that with Michael and that I wasn't in favor of, of him retaining his job. And he not only puts it in a statement once, but, but he puts it in, he, he puts it in a statement, um... a statement, um, another time, oh, works out, but that's another time, he speaks about executive session and about what happened on that day inside of executive session. You know, I mean, that's, that's, uh, that's not very becoming of, of an attorney. To, you know, page two, two, Commissioner Griffin has repeatedly threatened my job, including in the December twelfth executive session of the committee, over the issue of his travel. And yes, I was upset about the travel policy, and I still am, even more so today, because now Michael is saying that he never, he, he, he never, uh, told me that we hadn't broken our policy whenever I had asked him directly a number of times if we have broken our travel policy in regard to this voucher, and he told me, no, we haven't, we're good. And now he says that he didn't. So, whatever. But, but I feel like it's, it's not fair to the people of Otero County, and sure enough, not fair to Pemler, to have, now we have, now we're gonna have to retain other legal counsel just to answer my questions or represent me, you know how much more of an administrative headache that's gonna be? And, and it's like Michael's firing me because he says that I gave him panic attacks and, and harassed him whenever I've never done the like. The last time, on March the twelfth, whenever I discussed with Michael, and all I did with Michael was I asked him who had written this statement, and he wouldn't tell me. And I told him, Michael, you're the legal counsel, you know the law. I said, you know that there's more than one way to get this question answered, you can answer it willfully, or you can do it under a subpoena. But I'm, I am, should be, have the respect of knowing who wrote the statement. And then Michael jumped to the conclusion, well, are you trying, are you threatening to sue me? And I said, no, I'm not. I just wanted to know. And then after that, he said I was blocking the door to his office, but after that, I sent my son down there to show him his Lego truck. Now, if I would have really been that mad at Michael, and really been that furious at him, do you really think I'd have sent my son down there with his Lego truck to go show him his Lego ice cream truck? I mean, I think what, that instead of this being a Coy issue, I think it needs to be a Michael issue, and Michael needs to come to a point to, to either give all three of us representation, or maybe we should look at other options as far as counsel goes. Because, I, and I, I don't think it just pertains to me, but there's been issues just now with this ranch up here. You got those, you got that email that we got the other day, when they're wanting to build that road into High No Gal, and the, the guy was so mad about Michael, and about Michael not giving us the information? And now with this deal up here in Timberon with the water, you know, that deal too? I mean, I don't wa- I don't, I don't want to see anybody lose their job, you know? And, and, and I don't want to be mean or hateful or anything towards Michael personally, but this, this is a county, this is a county issue, this is a county business. And for Michael to feel like he could just say, oh, no, I can't represent Coy anymore, he harassed me because he questioned me on some things, and I had a panic attack, I don't know, I don't agree with it. I don't agree with hiring, I don't agree with putting up burden, further burden on the people of Otero County to have to pay for another attorney. I mean, if we agreed to this, then the, whatever that attorney cost should come out of Michael's salary, really. I mean, that would be the only real fair way to, to do it, as far as the... But then again, at the same time, it, it creates a whole administrative nightmare, because now we have two, two attorneys on the county payroll.
I'm not on to spending taxpayer dollars on another county attorney too. Excuse us. The, the thing is, I can't, have, have you filed a court charge for unsafe work, working conditions? I know, I know it's under investigation. So what, what exactly?
The, the memos is the only things that's been filed, that's the memos that you, you have.
So all they're doing is just, they're investigating?
I mean, I have, I have not been contacted by that person, but I was informed that it was going to happen.
They've made me the point of contact, and I haven't been contacted either. That's why I'm just trying to figure out what, is this just the investigation to see if the accusations are true, or is it a full-fledged charge against him?
I don't know what the remit the investigator has, because I, I didn't retain that person.
Commissioner Mark, what?
Well, I think it's, it's pretty sad that we'd have to hire an outside attorney, but I don't feel like it's right for Michael to feel threatened on his job either.
If, if there's, if there's, uh, grounds to feel threatened though, Vicki, is the thing, I mean, please don't accuse, please don't...
You can be pretty aggressive. And if I hadn't been raised by hard-headed cowboys, I probably couldn't handle you as well as I do, because I've been around guys like you my whole life, and I know their personalities, and I know how to deal with them, but not everybody does. I don't think Michael's that personality. I think you, I think you intimidate him, and I think that makes him uncomfortable at his job. And as a commissioner, I think it's, it's kind of up to you to maybe act a little bit above board about that.
Yeah, but, but I, just whenever you hold somebody accountable to do in their job, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I guess that I can have a different appro- I've always been over, above and beyond, I've been, I, I really honestly, I mean, I, I always speak to Michael when I go by his office, I always peek my head in there, I always try to be kind and nice. Now, if there's places where I feel like he made mistakes at, like in, with this Open Meetings Act violation, and this statement that you guys put out, that I just explained to you earlier, I did, I did, I didn't yell at him, but I was upset that they did it, and he put the county at such a, a huge risk, liability risk, you know? And, but then, whenever he says he has a panic attack and goes home crying, just because I called him to question on the deal, I don't know, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how to...
Do you have something to say?
Yeah, I do.
Well, I don't know.
What do you want to say? What is it that you could say in this, that, because this is basically between that dealing right there and that dealing right there?
I'm one of the people.
Say what you gotta say.
And I feel like you guys are representing the people that well at all.
We appreciate that.
And it's, this is very sad, this country has come down to this point. It's supposed to deliver your best. I see nothing to fear. Wrong man crying, please. The board, you're the boss, he's the employee. He has every right to go down and criticize his job's performance. We're supposed to represent the people. And it's sad that this country has come down to this point, where even, none of you are safe. You're gonna let him go down, you're gonna be next. Your property's gonna be next, your house.
That's fine.
They're gonna drag you out in the street.
That's fine.
And you willing to do that like a slave?
I'm willing to do what?
Like a slave, just be drug out in the street, be put in mass?
Nobody's gonna drag me out in the street, but go ahead and say what you want to say.
Yeah, you have a right. You're not doing nothing to defend the people who stand up for righteousness. Well, you got financial interests.
I, I don't know, I'm, I, I, I do know this, I've never, I've never, ever wanted to make Michael's life difficult, can promise you that. I, I've never intentionally wanted to be vindictive or anything towards him.
Well, could you guys work it out to where you can still work together? I mean, is that possible? Is that an option?
I don't know, that's, that would have to be a question that Michael would have to answer, because he's the one that's filed the complaint, you know? I mean, um, but I, I, I question his, his, I question his competency at times. I, and, and, I mean, as, we're essentially as employer, you know, I mean, we're stu- we're the stewards of the county, we're the representatives of the county, he's in that wheel of employees, so we, we should, uh, you know, we should be engaged in his job performance, and how he's handling the issues and stuff, and I feel like he's, he's left the county very vulnerable at times. And I've just expressed that to him, you know, this last one with this, the, uh, the statement that he wrote, gosh, and then he sent, Michael sent that to every press outlet across the United States, where it says Commissioner Griffin has made racist statements. It's like unbelievable, you know? But I don't feel like it's fair to the county of Otero to have another attorney, another legal bill. I don't feel like it's fair, I would love to have my own personal attorney, it'd be great, at my, and, you know, and at my beck and call. But that's not being a good steward to the people of Otero County and our tax base, so I think that we really need to, you know, really need to consider, um, maybe other options.
Do we have any idea what this would cost to get outside counsel?
I, I don't know what every attorney makes, but we would be looking at two to four hundred dollars an hour for every issue he would work on with Commissioner Griffin.
And that's not something we could go through New Mexico counties for?
No.
No?
I, I myself would just say, Michael needs to, Michael needs to come to a place, if he can represent me, then we move forward with that, and if he can't, then he'll have to make that decision himself. But for him to, to, to say, no, Coy, you're fired, go get, the county's gotta go hire you your own attorney, I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's fair to the county. Because we hired him to represent all of us, and the complaint that he filed is not right. It's, it's, I don't, I don't feel like, I don't feel like it's fair. I've never, as I said, I've never harassed him, and I've never been intentionally mean to him. I've questioned some of the decisions that he's made, and some of the actions that he's done, but that's only what an employer does. And I think there's a lot of irony in it, that Michael files this complaint and makes it public only the day after our budget hearing, whenever he asked for a raise, and I was not in favor of giving him a raise, if you guys remember that just recently. Whenever Michael wanted a raise, and I said, no, I don't feel like you've earned one, Michael. Think we're paying you enough. It was the very next day, or the day after, it was just a day or two after, he filed this complaint.
That's not correct. I filed it, I filed it previously.
Well, that's whenever I got it on my desk, was about a day after that budget hearing, was it not?
I don't know, I didn't put it on your desk.
Day or two after the budget hearing, I had it sitting on my desk, after we refused, after I had voted to refuse giving you a raise. I mean, was it coincidence? Did that have something to do with it? You know, because that's the only time I was really even vocal in my, well, no, I couldn't say that. I guess I was vocal in my displeasure before that as well, but, um, yeah. But in the executive, the statement that you made in your complaint referencing executive session, that was as careless as the press release. But I, I wouldn't be in agreement to hiring any other outside counsel. I just, you know, I'd be more inclined on the side that Michael needs to, um, needs to just continue to do the job that he was hired to do. And if I act in such a way that upsets Michael, then I need to be know, I need to be informed so I know that I need to watch what I say, or how I speak to him, or how I communicate to him, and I'll be more conscious about it. Because this statement, and Gerald, I, again, you should have let me know, you guys should have let me know, if he was sending you these emails saying he suffered from panic attacks and shortness of breath and losing his appetite because I talked to him in a certain way, I should have been, you guys should have let me know that, not just let it continue.
Can, this is under investigation, can this be tabled until the investigation is done, whoever this, uh, smart guy is, makes his determination?
You, you can, of course, you can table this item until further notice. I, I, I don't feel comfortable talking about the investigation, because it is under investigation, and by policy, I'm not allowed to speak of it outside of executive session, so I would rather not comment on the investigation.
I'm not a big fan of having, because you're talking thousands of dollars here, that is gonna cost the county. I would like to see what the investigation comes out, his report says.
Absolutely, absolutely. And maybe we can call him up and have an expediter, that'd be even better, because I can already see that it'll be the buzz now, complaint from Michael. So I'd like to have an ex, uh, an investigation done as soon as we can.
It's in process, right?
Yes, he has received all of the documents, and they are being reviewed, he will contact those individuals shortly for interviews.
Cool.
That's my opinion.
Let's table, well, let's table it then.
Yeah, I would say table it, just see what, what we find out.
Can I make a motion, uh, item twenty, to table this item until the report back, turns back from the investigation?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Item twenty-one was pulled, I will go to item twenty-two. Request approval to amend a current job description for a part-time employee at the accessories office. Steve?
Steve Boyle, assessor.
Hi, Steve.
Hey, how are you? I, uh, I wrote a little one-pager there, which I kinda think explains most everything, I don't know if y'all read it or not, but if you have other questions, you know, fire at me or whatever, and I'll try to answer them the best I can.
Well, okay. Part-time employee, so I'm, I'm taking it she, she's already, she's already done all the training, she's got her certification?
No, no, she's only taken one class, the first one, the first certification, so, and she passed that. That certification's worth five hundred dollars, but since she's called a data entry clerk, basically, right now, because in twenty thirteen, that's how they hired her. That's, we've used her in a lot more efficient and better ways over the years, even before I got to be assessor. She's a great employee, but she's now, her kids are getting older, and she's getting more interested in field work, being out in the field more, and potentially to be a full-time employee in the future, because she only worked, she only got twenty hours a week in the past, that we've used her for now, and then we did, a couple of years ago, when Leslie, um, retired, our personal property tax lady, then I gave her those responsibilities, because it only takes like four months out of the year to handle that. And she was okay with taking that on, and she's done a great job with that over the last couple of years. But she wants to, like, branch out, learn more, and so I told her, go to class, because I already had the money, and we lost a field appraiser, so I wasn't spending money I didn't have in the budget. But the big part is, we have to have, as Pamela had mentioned, we have to have her shown as a part-time field appraiser versus a data entry clerk for the ordinance that you guys did, or before you, that you did, because it just says field appraisers and assessor and deputy, it doesn't say anything about a data entry clerk or anybody else in our office.
Do you have a position for a field appraiser open now?
No, but I'm not gonna hire anybody new, I just hired one field appraiser. She's still gonna be doing personal property, she just wants to do field appraiser work too, on other parts of the year, when she's not doing personal property, because she's been helping in other ways with valuation and stuff, but she, I think she wants to become a field appraiser, but I don't wanna make her a full-time field appraiser, and she doesn't wanna be one. She's okay with being part-time, it's just I wanna make sure that we have her classified properly as, you know, assessment or field appraiser, because she does, more than fifty percent of her job is valuing stuff and that sort of thing anyway. So this is just to fix it, so she can continue and go on and go class two, class three, class four, which each one, you know, has, has amount of money in there, and be certified as a field appraiser in the future, so.
So the other thing, I talked to Pamela on this a little bit, she said that you turned in green sheet?
Mm-hmm.
And, and
Yes, sir.
The dollar amount of that was like a dollar increase an hour, and this, what you wrote, you got a four fifty increase.
Well, it's, oh, that, that just talks about the time when she took the additional duties. The thing that I turned in to Pamela was for five hundred dollars. It's a yearly thing, five hundred for the certification to be, she, since she's taken that class and passed the, the first certification, that four fifty is a different thing. That's what we gave her to take on the job as business personal property whenever that other lady retired, the one that I didn't replace.
Yep, then just he'll say he'll be taking it on for an additional four fifty an hour?
Uh, no, that's just talking about the past right there. So I'm sorry if I didn't communicate that perfectly. That was, I was talking about the business per, that paragraph, the business per, personal property change, so.
The way, the way I read it, it says, would Leah taking this on for an additional four fifty an hour?
That was in the past, that's already happened, that's a done deal. That happened two years ago. So, and then I was just talking about that, what, what she had done before for us, and then that paragraph is all about the past, basically. We didn't change her job description when we did that either, we just left her as data entry clerk, that's why I made that comment down there, I'm not sure why we didn't change it, but. So the five hundred is separate, that's just happened, she just passed that class like a month ago, and what I wanna do is, I wanna make her a part-time field appraiser, because she can't get that incentive for taking that extra training, which is good for all of us, without being called a part-time field appraiser. I don't wanna make her full-time, I don't want any more money except the incentive for her as she passes classes.
So it makes, it happens to create a position?
Nope, nope, we already have it. She's already been there since twenty thirteen as a part-timer, right? And we've increased her money over the years. And that was the last thing that she, well, she might've got a raise last year when you did the, uh, COLA, but that four fifty was her big change that happened two years ago, when she took on business personal property, and she's been doing it for the last couple of years. No new positions, no new hours, no money for that, just, I just wanna get her as a part, as called a field appraiser, so we can give her the incentive when she passes classes in the future. Which could be better for us, because that's what she wants to do, I think she wants to become a field appraiser in the future, a full-time maybe, because her kids are growing, and we always seem to have the most turnover with field appraiser. So this is good to have another person that's wanting to do that work, and wanting to get involved a little bit more, and take training for it, because she hasn't had any training in the past.
I sure don't have problems.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Awesome, see, this was easy, right?
Yeah.
Compared to everything else.
Oh, except Gerald, he's the one that had all the questions.
That's okay, he had good questions, I mean, you need to understand this, and I don't always have the best communication, so, but I don't know, could I ask the commission for a couple of minutes? As an elected official and a citizen?
Absolutely.
About what's going on?
Yes.
I don't know, if you wanna hear or not?
I do.
I have my own issue, I can tell you about it, and you might've heard about it. I don't like bullies. I like people that talk about issues, that compromise, figure stuff out. But we had a bully, the House Speaker. He called the Mexico Counties, and he called Steve Copeman, and he says, why did you guys vote against House Bill four? The, you know, the civil rights or whatever? That's just 'cause thirty, and he told him, it's 'cause thirty-three counties voted that. Oh, you need to change that, you need whatever, like, he was bullying Copeman. So then I got an email, and you might've heard about it, to six peoples, I got, there was an email with six people on it. And I made a comment about attorneys, and if I had a list, he'd be on it. So, of course, they went on the House floor, made a big deal about the whole thing. I've never talked to him, I never sent an email out and said, this is how New Mexico Counties feels, right? I don't know that guy, he's never talked to me, but they go on the House floor and then start throwing crap around. So that, that just pissed me off more, but I stayed out of it, because, you know, if you want to be a bully, fine, I'm not a bully, you know what I mean? I'll protect myself, but I'm not a bully, but now let me take the next step, so I've kinda felt that a little bit, as an elected official, so we have to be very careful about what we say. This is just my opinion, Cory, okay? Sometimes, I, sometimes I feel that, I actually agree with you on a lot of your issues and how you feel, I mean, I feel the same way about a lot of stuff, I feel a way about the country's going in the wrong trend and that sort of thing right now, but I think there's a greater, when you have greater authority, you have to have greater responsibility. And I sent that email on a Sunday night, and then Monday morning, before they even put it in the House, I said, maybe this was a little inappropriate in my email, sorry, I, you know, I sent the email in the first place, so I thought about it, I took, I said a prayer the night before, and I thought about it, and I sent that email. So, and then I said a prayer for our Speaker, and also our legislators, but sometimes I feel like, I heard you're, you used to be a pastor. Sometimes I feel like you, you know, you talk this legal, illegal stuff, let's talk a little moral stuff, what's the moral thing to do? And whenever I, I try, I'm not perfect, when I think about things I say, I wanna say, how's that gonna impact other people? I was very bothered when we get death threat calls, and I'm up at the front, and Tio, our security guy, is up there answering the phone, because Diane can't even answer it. Because of comments you made, right? So, you know, you can say what you want, you get an opinion, I get an opinion, but I think we need to think about how that affects other people more, and, and that's all I wanna say about that, I mean, you know, I'm just saying, greater authority, we have greater authority, so I get it, if I say something, I need to suck it up, if I screw something up and tell somebody I'm sorry about it, because perceptions matter. If they perceived it was a bad deal, then guess what, it was a bad deal, even how I might've felt differently about what I said, but their perception was that, so I need to, you know, respect that. That's all, I mean, I just, so I'd like, I'd really like, and I'm, I'm gonna say some prayers tonight too, after everything that went on today. When someone becomes ineffective in a job as a businessman, they need to go away or find another job, that's just my personal opinion. If you guys can't be ineffective as a commission, we need to figure out how to be effective. Now, y'all need to be able to communicate each other, I, I hope you can bury your hatchets or whatever, I mean, you know, what somebody said earlier, I thought that guy from Weave was pretty awesome, some of the stuff.
He's great, he's good.
So, I'm hoping y'all can work together.
Sure.
And you have, y'all have good ideas, y'all have good opinions, but if you're gonna fight with each other, it's just, it ain't, it ain't right, it just ain't right for the county, that's it.
And I agree, I agree, I agree, but
You letting me say that, I appreciate that.
You know? And, but I, you know, everybody always expects, everybody always looks at me, um, like I'm the big instigator of everything, and like I'm the one to blame, but, you know, things hurt me as well, that statement that Gerald and Vicki wrote about me, that hurt, you know, whenever it's coming from the county, and then when Michael sends it off to everybody, every media outlet across the United States. It's not, that's not, it's not nice to be called a racist. And then to have it pass through our meeting today, whenever I can't even, they can't even give an account of it being, of anything racist that I've actually said, um, you know, it's not always, it's not, you know, I'm, I'm real, I'm, I'm, I'm really the easy guy to look at and point the finger at and blame for everything, but at the same time, um, you know.
That's okay, I mean, I can't vote, you guys have the power to vote that. I would, I felt like that one item probably should've just been withdrawn, and the only reason I feel like twenty-five should've just been withdrawn is because it's all out in the open, it's all been talked about.
Yeah.
And, and like somebody said, let the process happen, whatever it is, because I just want you guys to figure out how to try to work better together, and maybe it'll never happen, because you know, you get some personalities in the room, and they're never gonna work with each other, but I'm hoping that'll happen, and I appreciate you letting me, uh, just make my, uh, two cents worth.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, I'll make a motion for approval to amend the current job description for the part-time employee at the assessor's office.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Steve.
Item twenty-three. Request approval to adopt the Otero County Ways and Compensation Study. Hi, Casey.
Good morning, Commissioner, I guess good afternoon now, isn't it? Cassie Green, Human Resources Director. Um, this was put on agenda a few months ago, and it was tabled, and then at the last budget meeting, you requested that it be added back on the agenda, so here we are.
Well, here's my thoughts on this. You know, I, I've said from the day one I've been in here, that I, I wanna try to get our county employees up to where it is a, they're, they're making what they're, they're really worth, they're making what a national average, or what. This book says that we should be somewhere around, so with that being said, I'm in favor of accepting this and then working on a wage raise.
I agree with that.
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah, it's, it's good to have a, a model, you know, um, not to say that, you know, we'll get there overnight, but it's, it is great to have something to, to shoot for, so, yeah.
That being said, uh, I'll make a motion, request approval, adopt the Otero County Ways and Compensation Study.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Cassie.
Thank you.
Item twenty-four. Request, request appoint a county commissioner to the solid waste authority.
Finally.
How are you, Ralph?
Been a long day.
Ralph Murphy, Otero County Solid Waste Superintendent. What this is, is, uh, in the past, we've had somebody on the commission that would fill one of the positions for the board for the solid waste authority. In the past, it was like Ray Backstrom, uh, Susan Flores, and then Lord Bees was the last one. And we have a vacant position right now on that board. So I'm looking for volunteers to fill that position.
What is, what exactly does it consist of? Uh, you just have like a monthly meeting?
No, actually, it's a yearly meeting, sometimes there's special meetings that are held, but at the minimum, one meeting a year, at the most, probably two or three at the very most.
Okay. Well, I don't know.
As any consolation, this meeting for this year's already over.
Where do you have your meetings, are they local, or?
They, sometimes they're here, and sometimes they're in Redo, so.
Okay. Well, I wouldn't mind doing that, I mean, I, I'll volunteer for that.
Let me, let me find me.
Sounds like a dirty job.
It is. Stinky too.
All right, so at that, uh, I'll make a motion that we appoint Commissioner Markford to the, to the board for the solid waste authority, we're on the commission, do it.
One second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ralph.
Thank you.
All right, at that time, that's gonna bring us to commission discussion. The, I had to have Michael draw up a letter and show on the WOOP, uh, this whole little WOOP committee thing, or, anyway, they, they were talking about some sections in it, so we had to have Michael, I had him research that, and then send them uh, the ordinance, Otero County has an ordinance in effect right now for there's no, not supposed to be any walls in Otero County. So, that being, that's in the draft, there this, this is like a slow boat to China thing, and writing up, and it's probably gonna take a year to get this thing all settled out. Uh, the other deal is, is meeting with the Chamber of Commerce Tuesday. They, they had the, the, the city was there, uh, the city convenience person was there, I thought Ralph was, he was invited there. City manager, they had all three law enforcement agencies there. Um, it, trying to get behind to get this ideas on, uh, how to clean up Otero County. And it's, so they, they're looking for any kind of ideas, any kind of work, one of the biggest, one of the biggest areas that I see a lot is, anywhere where there's a convenience center, or drop-off center, there's heavy, heavy trash and stuff, because nobody's covering their pickups, covering their trailers, so somehow, I, and I realize there's not enough sheriff, state police, and city cops to do all of this, but they're gonna have to start kind of keeping an eye out for them people going down the road with, uh, and it's a little five-dollar tart, you could cover it up, and stop a lot of it from blowing out. Chaparral, right now, is working on the same type of thing, trying to get ideas, worked up for trying to clean up that. Bill Farmer and I went down there last Thursday on an issue. Uh, this is in the middle of town, supposed to be, it was on abandoned vehicle type thing. There was hundreds of cars on this lot, and it's like a salvage yard. And, um, so they're trying to get that worked out, and get it cleaned up. They, uh, and then that, that's They, uh, and then that, that's pretty much on the it, so if anybody has any ideas on what they can do to, on the cleanup part of Otero County, Alan Magordo, uh, please take him to the chamber, the little one's putting it on, get hold of Rod Eaton, uh, the, the biggest thing I, we all feel at that meeting kind of came out, is, it's got to be a community effort, somehow we can get the community behind. Two weeks ago, maybe it's three weeks ago now, they had a big deal, the, the chamber had a big deal that gathered people up to pick up the trash along the bypass. And I think, I could be wrong on this number, but there was about a hundred and seventy people that showed up, and you don't really realize how much trash you pick up, or how, how you really don't pay attention to off the side of the road, but once you sit down there yourself and you pick that trash up, put it in a bag, every time I drive down the bypass now, I look at the section of the road I cleaned up, and I'm furious when I see the trash back out there, somebody's already thrown it back out, you know? But the community is going to have to get behind and help before this will ever get changed, so that's, that's all I got right now.
Yeah, I've been, as we, as I started out with the, with the forest and looking at different opportunities or different business ventures, to take care of maybe some of the smaller diameter stuff, I've recently been talking to a company that builds fence panels in, uh, I'm visiting with Randall, the Chavas, the district ranger a while back, and, uh, I think they're, they're going to have, in that Sacramento mountain restoration project, um, they're going to have a lot of the smaller diameter stuff that, um, hopefully will be available to harvest, and, uh, it'll be the exact sort of stuff that this company is, uh, looking towards, so, um, hopefully with that, um, and I've also been doing research in, um, in trying to make contact with different companies as far as the south end of the mesa goes, and natural gas, um, as I mentioned earlier, that there's going to be, predicted to be, uh, huge energy shortage, um, especially with Escalante and Four Quarters, both coal-fired plants shutting down, um, it's going to leave a huge hole in our grid, and, uh, green energy's not going to get us there. The solar panels and the wind turbines are not going to produce the type of, um, energy that our grid is demanding, and, uh, and we're hoping that possibly, um, some of these different companies that use natural gas and production of electricity, um, maybe we can, maybe we can entice some of them to come in, I mean, I, I know that the more security that we give these companies on the county level, um, the more opportunity that we may have to, to maybe get some of them in, you know? Recently with the, the guy that was talking about, um, solar panels, putting solar panels down on the south end of our, of the mesa, and I know that he's planning on coming back again and giving us another presentation, and wanting, of course, big incentives to do it, um, you know, it just makes absolutely no sense to me to put solar panels over the top of, of our landscape whenever we're rich in natural gas underneath it. One of the big reasons that they say that we, they don't want us drilling is because it's invasive to our landscape, whenever there's nothing any more invasive than solar panels, um, you know, whenever you have hundreds or, hundreds of acres of solar panels, um, nothing, no game or anything can walk through them, where as if you have a few wellheads and you have the right plan, you have the right innovation, uh, everything can be done environmentally friendly, and, and I think that we might have opportunities, so I'll keep it up, and hopefully I'll be able to have, uh, a further update on our next meeting.
I don't have a whole lot to say this time, I had made some notes, and evidently I left them at my desk at the house, but, um, I've just been working on getting a lot of county emails and stuff, and I've been trying to keep up with what's going on down at the border, and hoping that that doesn't negatively affect our county, but it's, it's going to, it's going to affect all of us, so. It's been a long meeting, so I think that's all I've got.
I'll make mine very quick, the only thing I wanted to report on, and I just emailed it to you, is I got the quote for the security surveillance system on this building, it's just a little over twenty-six thousand dollars, which is much better than I expected. I'm still waiting on the quote for the annex, but you will have that for the next budget meeting. And then Sylvia had something she wanted to-
Thank you, real quick, Commissioner, um, as, I'm sure you've noticed that these have been showing up in your office, um, these are some, some are subdivisions, and these are something that can't be done through a claim of exemption, so it's either more than two lots, but less than five lots, so they're not really full-blown subdivisions, but they are doing divisions that fall outside of the regular, uh, claim of exemption. The authority can be delegated to the planning commission for them to approve these without them coming to the county commission. However, right now, our county, I mean, our planning commission is a five-member board, and two of them work for Alamo Taro. So we've decided, along with Mark Port, that we would go ahead and hold the public hearing through the planning commission, and then make our recommendation and bring it to the board for approval. So next month, we'll see metal land, and then the copper springs, and, um, and, uh, capital follow, so just so you guys know what's going on with these.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Um, earlier Matt spoke about code enforcement, um, I have, one of the cases has percolated to my level, it's set for a pet and bench trial in a couple of weeks. I sat down with Freddie Rodriguez, the code officer, earlier this week, and prepped him for the trial, and I think we've got a strong, strong case against the defendant, but we'll see what Judge Goffey says in a couple of weeks.
Did, did Bill or Matt give you on the, like, salvage yard law rule?
No, I, I don't think I've had that, that conversation yet.
Well, we might have to begin then.
Okay.
And I still need signatures for the-
Anything else? This time I'll call for adjournment. I'll make a motion for adjournment.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.